Good evening, everyone. I want to call the Planning Commission for Tuesday, April 5th, 2022, to order. And first of all, I'd like to get a determination of a quorum, please.
Larry Chesney.
Present.
Sarah Sivolcheck.
Here.
Francine Doncic.
Present.
Michael Flick.
Present.
Kate Nelson. I'm going to ask her to unmute. We do have her on Zoom. Pat Phillips.
Here.
Larry Payton.
Here.
And Kate Nelson? Kate, I see you. If you can unmute, please. I'm not getting a response there. However, we do have a quorum, and once Kate's able to chime in, I'll let you know.
All right. Thank you. Before we go any further, I just want to do a reminder that not only are we in chambers, we are on Zoom. So I want to do a quick reading about Zoom. Anyone wishing to call into Zoom, the call number is 1-669-900-9128, and the meeting ID number is 842-7265-9406. And they say, note, this option will require a computer with audio and visual capabilities. Any participant wishing to speak via Zoom shall sign into Zoom with their first and last names and identify themselves with their first and last names when they're called upon. If you are a member of the public and you wish to speak, then please click the raised hand prompt symbol during the public comment portion of the item you wish to speak on. You will only be called upon to speak during the public comment periods. Any panelists on Zoom should mute their mics until they're ready to speak. If anyone is having difficulty hearing the audio through Zoom, it may be helpful to use earbuds. Thank you. Next on the item is Larry. Would you do the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Sure. My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chair, if I may, this is Recording Secretary Lacy Kerfoot.
Yes, Lacy.
I believe I know why Kate didn't chime in. During the determination of quorum, I had not unmuted the chambers audio, so I don't know if it's appropriate so that we get it on the recording. Jen, if we would just take that again. Okay. Thank you. Sorry, everyone.
It's okay.
Larry Chesney.
Present.
Sarah Sivolcheck.
Here.
Francine Doncic.
Present.
Michael Flick.
Present.
Kate Nelson.
Here.
Thanks, Kate. Larry Payton.
Present.
Pat Phillips.
Here.
And again, we have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Ms. Gustafson, if we could get the ethics law announcement, please?
Commissioners are reminded that if with respect to any matter or any person coming before the commission today, number one, you've received a gift or loan; number two, you have a pecuniary interest; number three, you have a commitment in a private capacity such as a family, employment, business, or similar relationship; or number four, if you've provided representation or counseling before an agency to a person or entity for compensation within the last year on a matter that's being considered here today, please remember to disclose that gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation at the time the matter is being considered. And furthermore, please abstain from deliberation or voting on the matter if it's clear that the gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation would materially affect the independence of judgment of a reasonable person. Commissioners are also reminded that under our Planning Commission rules, if you've had any contact outside this meeting with any persons interested in a matter coming before the commission today, please disclose the content and nature of that contact at this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gustafson. If we could have the appeal procedure, please. Secretary Lloyd.
Certainly. Most decisions rendered by the Planning Commission are appealable to the Board of County Commissioners. If you disagree with the decision of the Planning Commission and you qualify as an aggrieved person or party, you may appeal in writing within 10 calendar days from the date that the decision being appealed is reduced to writing, filed with the Secretary of the Planning Commission, and mailed to the original applicant in the proceeding being appealed in accordance with Washoe County Code. Please call the planning staff immediately at 328-6100 for information on the appeal procedure and the application fee.
Thank you, Secretary Lloyd. Ladies, do we have any public comment at this time, either in the chambers or via Zoom?
Yes, in chambers, I have Mark Newman.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is, for the record, Mark Newman. I have concern in Sun Valley with all the new development that's going on. There's Five Ridges, which is just east of the Highland Ranch Boulevard. There's going to be 5,000 somewhat houses dumping out into Highland Ranch. There's Highland Village, which is actually being built on Highland Ranch Road. There's some development going down into Lower Sun Valley. There's about five different developments that are going to be coming through Sun Valley. Right now, during the peak hours of the day, to try to make a drive either Highland Ranch, 7th Street, to Lemon Valley, or down Sun Valley Boulevard to get out of the valley, it can take up to 45 minutes to do with about three miles. I'd like you guys all to please consider that when you're making your decisions or who to go to with Endot to try to help improve some of the exits and entrances into the valley during the rush hour peaks. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment?
William Sanders.
Hello. My name's William Sanders. I came tonight to say just a few words about the development, the proposed development at 8900 Lakeside. We're not sure how it's going to go forward, but as you can see from my jeans and work boots, I'm kind of out of my element, so I'll say a few words. I'll be quick. I wanted to take this opportunity to say a few words in regards to the new development. First, I would like to say it is not our intention to stand in the way of progress, nor is it at all our intention to try to impede on our neighbors' rights. That being said, I do consider it my responsibility to speak for my family and friends and the generations that came before me. To be responsible stewards of the land, to care what happens with our neighbors, the biggest issue to us is our water. Right now, we don't want to lose our water. The animals depend on it, and we're just concerned that we want to see it done right. We want to make sure that all the things have been looked into, all the studies have been done, and no shortcuts have been taken. And we just wanted to be here to speak our piece, so please consider that. These are our lives. My five generations before me lived and worked on this land, and it means everything to us. So what might come and go quick in a decision or a conversation, it matters. It means the world to us and the people around us. So thank you very much for even considering our end of it, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Ladies, any more public comment at this time?
I do have one hand raised via Zoom. Kathy Reynolds. I'm going to allow you to speak. If you could please unmute and state your first and last name for the record.
Hi, my name is Kathy Reynolds. I am a resident on Sun Valley, and my public comment is your consideration for the Chocolate Group LLC proposed development on Getford Parkway for 45.51 acres. My concern with this is they're asking, of course, for you guys to change the zoning, and in their 83-page presentation that they put together, they're talking about all of the streets that they have that they're going to be using for entrances and exits into their development, and they currently only have one that they'll be able to access, which is West 2nd Street, because that is a county road. The rest of the roads that they're considering are all private property, dirt roads. My other concern is for police and fire. We currently only have one fire department in Sun Valley, and they're talking about putting 204 low-cost apartments up there, and we still only have one fire department, and we have a very low police presence out here with the Sheriff's Department. So my concern and what I want you to look at is not only is the traffic that we get from Spanish Springs that currently comes through Sun Valley, now you're going to add 204 more cars or more into our already congested traffic space and our schools that are currently already overcrowded. You're going to add all these additional children, but the crime, and you're also putting the burden on the homeowners or landowners out here to maintain county roads, private roads, where the county doesn't do anything for those roads, and you're going to have additional traffic coming from this development out there. So those are things I would like you to consider before you just unilaterally approve this development out here, because it will impact quite a few people out here with traffic, police, and fire presence out here. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. I have no further hands raised via Zoom.
And no more in the chambers?
Nothing else in chambers.
So at this point, I will be closing public comment.
Madam Chair, I apologize. He just raised his hand.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Bruce Waldecky. I'm speaking here concerning the 8900 Lakeside Drive that was on the schedule. I thought I would speak now, even though I may not come up today. At a neighborhood meeting on March 9th, the main concern, absolutely overall main concern of the homeowners, was lack of water and worry, they are worried that their wells were run dry. I've got direct knowledge of this. I live on Brunswick Mill Road. This is a small development titled Forest Hills Estates. It's got 18 lots, 17 built on, one vacant. My well weren't dry in 2009. It was at 395 feet. We drilled to 705 feet. It's now working okay. The well driller told me, I asked him, can we go deeper? He wasn't sure. He thought not. Would I find water deeper? He didn't know. My lot is right next to this planned development. Bell Haven Road is there, and on the other side of us, the planned development. Many other homes, and Brunswick Mill in our development, which is called Forest Hills Estates, have had well problems, and it's due always to lack of water. The neighbor across the street at 700 feet, his well's okay. Next to him is an empty lot, the only one there. Next to him, they drilled deeper, I don't know how deep, three, four years ago. Next to him, he had to drill deeper. He finally gave up sort of on his well, tore out all of his lawn, it's got astroturf Across the arroyo to the south is Richard Bunting's small development on Shellborne. There are currently three homes there with wells. There'll probably be five to eight more wells there drilled when it's fully drilled out. And just below that, towards the east, towards this planned development, Lakeside, there are four homes that are going to be built. One, they're currently building, all on wells. The development itself would have 24 lots, 25 wells. This adds up to 58 wells, and that's not including the stuff on Bell Haven. Each one of them using 2 acre feet a year. On the March 9th meeting, other homeowners affected in this area, that they've had wells, well problems, and this is down on Lone Tree, but mainly Bell Haven. I spoke with the planner for the applicant, Dave Snellgrove, very nice fellow, and at the meeting, you all remember Casablanca, the movie, when the police chief of Casablanca came into the bistro and said he'd heard that there was gambling there, and the police chief was shocked, shocked that there was gambling there. Well, Mr. Snellgrove was shocked.
Sir, I apologize. I apologize. I didn't read it earlier, but public comment is limited to three minutes.
Oh, are we done at three?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Next, I have Luis Godoy.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Luis. So I'm also a little out of my element here. I'm a scientist. I've presented for dissertation and thesis. Is this a little different, those hits, a little bit more to home with regards to the Chocolate Drive LLC that proposed development? I understand the meeting is more for rezoning. This is talking about rezoning. So I had mentioned it earlier, one of the things, people choose to live in Sun Valley for a reason, right? People chose not to live in there a long time ago, right? My parents moved there. I chose to come back after doing my masters and everything. I chose to come back to Sun Valley. I have an opportunity to live. I wanted to. I could live in Manhattan. I could live East Coast. I could live wherever. However, I chose to move back to Sun Valley. One of the reasons why is because Sun Valley and everything has been known for open spaces. However, here in Washoe County, one of the things that's occurring is that is now becoming a limited scarce resource. That proposed 45 acres is one of the things that my parents and many people that live along Chocolate Drive chose to live by. So one of the things I mentioned with regards to rezoning is why not rezone that as open space? Somehow, it came from put BLM to now it's privately owned somehow. Don't know how that happened. That's not for here. But the thing I want to bring up is this is rezoning for building. However, I'm asking, please, why can't it be considered to be rezoned for open space? One of the things that Mr. Newman here mentioned too is traffic. There's already proposed developments there. It's already bad. Traffic is bad. Accidents are bad. You know, it's just very dangerous to drive through Sun Valley now. It's used as a thoroughfare from Spanish Springs. It's used as a thoroughfare to get up to Cold Springs, Lemon Valley, even into the city. Another thing mentioned too, as a scientist, water is a limited natural resource. We are lucky to have had a good winter, bad, I guess, in the sense that it gave us a lot of snow. Increasing and building is only going to put a large burden on what is a limited natural resource. So I mean, I just don't, you know, would not like to see this rezoning and things occurring such as this, especially here on Chocolate Drive, again, where my area. I just do not want to see anything built there. Anyways, I appreciate your time, and I hope you do consider this and consider, you know, the community, the community here that is coming to you with concerns. Please, you know, again, I understand progress, but progress doesn't have to be destruction. Thank you.
Ladies, is there any further public comment at this time?
No further public comment in chambers.
And no hands raised via Zoom.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, then I'm officially closing public comment at this time. Ma'am, do you wish to speak under public comment?
Ma'am, if you could come to the mic and announce your first name and last name. And then we, and of course, during public comment, you have three minutes. Thank you. Hi, excuse me. I know how much fun it is, and it's kind of things, I haven't really done it before. I had notes in here, but I forgot. Takes a long time for me to get done.
You need to speak up, and you need to say your first name and last name, please.
Here we go. Ready? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
My name is Sandra Easely. We live right off of 4th Street, right on Chocolate Drive, and I don't think that, I don't think this is a very good idea. First of all, I've had a stroke, and I like the astronomy, and I know the lights will be on forever, because you have to go parking, it goes on. I'm sorry, I feel like I'm having, I'm a stroke now.
That's okay.
There's a lot of things on which I had my notes right here, but, you know, I'm being stupid. Sorry, I only have three minutes.
Well, ma'am, you could, you know, there is public comment during the item actually on the agenda.
Oh, geez, I didn't know that, because we were.
That's okay. So if you want to take a breath and then speak during the actual item on the agenda, if you would prefer, that's up to you.
I apologize.
No, no, no. You can speak now. You can speak now and during there, but if you prefer to get your notes and everything, you'll be able to speak then also.
All right, that would be really cool.
Okay.
I thought we were right in for whatever.
No, no, no. You're fine.
I apologize.
No, you don't need to apologize.
And a comment for now.
I just didn't want you to rush yourself if you weren't ready when you have another option.
Yeah, no, sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah, thank you, crazy, and thank you, and I apologize, and I'll be back later.
No, you're fine.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Thank you.
Now I'm stupid.
Ladies, is there any further public comment at this time?
No further public comment in chambers. And no hands raised via Zoom.
Okay. Then I'm officially closing the public comment at this time. Okay. Next on, we're going for approval of tonight's agenda, and before we get started, I need to let everyone know that I know a lot of you might be here for Item 8D, the Lakeside Custom Lot subdivision. That is being pulled from tonight's agenda on the request of a continuance by the applicant. So we will not be speaking about Item 8D, the Lakeside Custom Lot Division, tonight. That will be, that will be put onto another agenda at this point. We do not know the exact date, but the applicant has required a continuance. So if anyone is specifically here for that item, it's up to you whether you would like to stay, but we won't be bringing that item up tonight. We're not open to questions this time, ma'am. Thank you. So at this point, I would like to, someone would make a motion to approve tonight's agenda with the new amended removal of Item 8D, please.
Chair Doncic.
Yes, Vice Chair Switcick.
I am prepared to make that motion to accept the agenda as amended, pulling Item 8D.
Thank you, Chair Switcick. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Flick. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item 8D has been, thank you. Item 8D has been officially removed from the agenda. Like I said, it will be on in a further meeting. We do not know at this time. Okay. So moving along would be the approval of the March 1st, 2022 draft of the minutes for our last meeting. If I could get someone with a motion for approval?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Flick. A second if there's.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Payton. We have a first and a second. Any changes or anything, corrections? Hearing none. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstains? All right. Thank you. Next, we move on to Item 8, public hearings, Item 8A. Secretary Lloyd, if you could read for us, please.
This item, 8A, is abandonment case number WAB 220001, the Bailey Government tract abandonment, for hearing, discussion, and possible action to approve an abandonment of Washoe County's interest in 33-foot-wide government patent easements on the north, south, and west property lines of parcel 142-24114, and to approve the reduction of 33-foot-wide utility easements to 15 feet on the north and south property lines of the parcel, and to 30 feet on the west property line of the parcel. Representing Washoe County in this case is planner Katie Stark.
Thank you, Katie. Before we go any further, are there any disclosures by the Commissioners, either ethics or ex parte regarding this item? Hearing none. Thank you. Katie, please.
Good evening. Katie Stark, Washoe County Planning. The case before you is abandonment case number WAB 22-0001, the Bailey Government tract abandonment. The parcel is located in the southwest Truckee Meadows area on White Creek Lane, south of Arrow Creek Parkway. The request is for an abandonment of Washoe County's interest in the 33-foot-wide government patent easements on the north, south, and west property lines. The applicant is also requesting to reduce the 33-foot-wide utility easements to 15 feet on the north and south property lines, and to 30 feet on the west property line. The parcel has multiple regulatory zones, high-density rural and general rural, and the setbacks are 30 feet on the front and rear yards, and 15 feet for the side yard In the images above, the first with the yellow highlights shows the requested area of abandonment, the 33-foot-wide government patent easements. And then the second image with the green highlights is my approximation there with the highlighter, and that is the portion of the utility easements that the applicant would like to abandon. Many government and home tracts of land were established with easements on all sides of the parcel, because they were not yet sure where roads would be placed. Over the years, roads have been established that provide access to all of the parcels on the land surrounding the subject property, so the remaining access easements are no longer needed. In this image, you can see the subject property with the blue outline, and the properties to the north and the west have access via White Creek Lane, and the parcels to the south and the east have access via Beiler Road. Wanted to call out this portion of the applicant's request to reduce the utility easements. Engineering did provide a condition, which is included in Exhibit A, the conditions of approval, and they are requesting that the utility easements be retained or relocated. Appropriate documentation would need to be recorded, showing the granting of new easements if necessary by any utilities that, for any utilities that might be located there. And again, if those utilities are using those easements, they would also need to relinquish the former easements. Washoe County's interest is only in the roadway portion of the easements, and those utility easement eliminations or reductions would have to go through the specific utility companies. For Washoe County Engineering, that typically occurs through a quitclaim deed. Also, Washoe County Engineering has required that the drainage easement rights are reserved. So I just wanted to come back to those images. So if the Planning Commission were to approve this requested abandonment this evening, those yellow portions that are highlighted, that access easement on the three sides, would be abandoned, and the condition provided by engineering would allow the possibility of those utility easements, those portions of the utility easements, to be abandoned. But that would not occur tonight. That would need to go through the specific utility companies. Notices were sent to 15 parcels, abutting the subject parcel. The project application was sent to 17 agencies for review. Two of the agencies provided conditions, and those conditions are included in Exhibit Staff is able to make the three required findings. Staff is recommending approval with the conditions of approval, and here is a possible motion for your consideration. I'm available for questions. The applicant indicated that she would be here but was not interested in making a presentation this evening.
Thank you, Katie. At this time, is there any questions from the Commissioners for either Katie or the Okay, hearing none. Ladies, is there any public comment, either via Zoom or in chambers, for this item?
No public comment in chambers.
And I have no hands raised via Zoom.
Okay. Then I'll bring it back to the Commission. Do you have any questions at this time? Okay, then I will.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Would you like to propose a motion?
I was going to close the public hearing and call it back for discussion or motion. Yes.
Okay. I move that after giving reason, consideration to the information contained in the staff report, information received during the public hearing, Washoe County Planning Commission approved Washoe County's abandonment of interest in the 33-foot-wide government patent easements on the north, south, and west property lines of parcel 142-24114, as indicated in abandonment case number WAB 22-0001 for Paige and Olivia Bailey, with the conditions included as Exhibit A to this matter, having made all three findings in accordance with Washoe County Code Section 110, 806. having made all three findings in accordance with Washoe County Code Section 110, 806.20.
Thank you, Commissioner Chesney. Do we have a second? Thank you. We have a second with Commissioner Flick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any nays, abstentions? Thank you very much. The item passes with a unanimous vote. Next on the agenda is item 8B. Secretary Lloyd, if you would read it into the record, please.
This is a master plan amendment, case number WMPA 22-0003, and regulatory zone amendment, case number WRZA 22-0003, for hearing, discussion, and possible action to, one, approve a master plan amendment to re-designate one parcel totaling 45.51 acres from suburban residential to 40.64 acres of urban residential and 4.87 acres of open space. Second part of this request is to initiate and recommend, I'm sorry, initiate and recommend approval of a regulatory zone amendment on one parcel totaling 45.51 acres from medium-density suburban to 40.64 acres of medium-density urban, and 4.87 acres of open space, subject to final approval of the associated master plan amendment by the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners and a finding of conformance with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan by the regional planning authorities. And third, to, if approved, authorize the chair to sign the resolution to this effect. Representing Washoe County in this, in this matter is our staff planner, Chris Bronzick.
Chris, before we start, first off, I just want to remind everybody, I know, I want to say thank you. A lot of detail in here, excellent work. But remember, we are only voting on the master, the master plan amendment and the regional zoning amendment. We are not voting on the, anything else in here of where they think they might, how many, what the lots are going to look like, the size of anything. This is strictly zone, the zone amendments tonight, the amendments tonight, okay? And before we go any further, I want to ask any disclosures by the commissioners, either ethics or ex parte communications. I just have to have on the record that I was contacted by one of the presenters via phone, and I explained to him that I think that everything is in the packets, and we look forward to hearing their presentation tonight. There was nothing else, just for the record. All right, Chris, if you would, please.
Thank you. Chris Bronzick, Washoe County Planning. So we're looking at WMPA 22-3 and WRZA 22-3. This is for the Chocolate Drive Master Plan and Regulatory Zone Amendment request. As mentioned, this is a master plan map amendment to re-designate one parcel totaling 45.51 acres from suburban residential to urban residential and open space. Additionally, as part of that is the regulatory zone amendment. And again, they're going to be re-designating it from the existing medium-density suburban to medium-density urban and open space. So this is located off of Chocolate Drive. This is a pretty linear parcel that extends from West Second Avenue all the way up to West Fifth Avenue. So I've provided a side-by-side comparison, master plan designation map. On the left is the existing, that's that pink color, and that is the suburban residential. On the right, you'll see the brown urban residential, plus parts of that parcel now containing open space. Additionally, I've provided a side-by-side for the existing and proposed regulatory zone amendment. Again, the pink on the left is that medium-density suburban, and on the right, that brown and yellow is that open space and that medium-density urban. So the parcel is currently vacant. Within the application, the applicant does state that there's a need for denser development and affordable housing options in the area. It should be noted that both the Sun Valley Area Plan and the master plan both support affordable housing options as the applicant is proposing. The Sun Valley Area Plan states that the plan is intended to manage growth and development in a manner that includes a range of low, medium, and high-density housing opportunities, as well as affordable housing. So within this analysis, I'm going to talk a little bit more about the, what the Sun Valley, what the Sun Valley Area Plan contains. So within the character and vision statements, the Sun Valley Area Plan does state that the SCMA, or the Suburban Character Management Area, and the DCMA, the Downtown Character Management Area, will be designated growth areas within Sun Valley. In 2015, it should be, the Medium Density Urban Regulatory Zone was added to the Sun Valley Area Plan, and specifically to the Suburban Character Management Area. Within the region of Sun Valley, there are two other areas that have recently, or contain, the Medium Density Urban Zone. There's one that is roughly a quarter mile to the southeast, that is Medium Density Urban, that was rezoned in 2015. And in 2021, it came in for an affordable housing project. This parcel is located in the SCMA. Additionally, there is a parcel three-quarters of a mile to the southeast that is also MDU, contains an 83-unit apartment complex, and is also within the SCMA. So within the Sun Valley character statement, it also does state that the desired land use pattern is for mixed-use and multifamily to be concentrated along Sun Valley Boulevard, which is located within the Downtown Character Management Area. Additionally, I wanted to highlight the density. So Medium Density Urban does allow for 21 dwellings per acre, whereas MDS only allows for three dwellings per acre. So as mentioned in my previous slide, the yellow areas highlight the existing MDU apartment complexes that are located within Sun Valley. It should be noted that the Medium Density Urban Regulatory Zone is not allowed within the Downtown Character Management Area, but it is allowed within the Suburban Character Management Area. So I've provided a regulatory zone compatibility map. This is part of the Washoe County Master Plan Land Use Matrix. So as we can see with the change from Medium Density Suburban to Medium Density Urban, we see a lesser compatibility rating at medium, and then the remainder at high compatibility. So this parcel is located within the Sun Valley General Improvement District Service Area. SIVGID has noted that there's water and sewer capacity to service this increased density. That water rights, when a development comes through, will be required to be obtained from someone. Washoe County School District did receive notice of the application and provided no comments or concerns with the amendment. So the applicants did hold a neighborhood meeting on March 21st, 2022, at Hovey's Casino. That meeting was held from 5:08 PM to 7:35 PM. The public had a significant number of concerns. Some of those were related to the size of the lot, whether a development would be Section 8 housing, the number of units, trail system, dust, noise, traffic, lighting, as well as there was concerns related to a misrepresentation of the density that's currently there, or that's going to be allowed there. The information that we received was, there was a concern related to seven dwellings per acre. So provided a noticing map, we did notice 212 parcels within 750 feet, which is standard for state law. So the master plan amendment findings are consistency with the master plan, compatible land uses, response to change in conditions, availability of facilities, desired pattern of growth, and Sun Valley Area Plan required finding, Sun 13-1. Additionally, the regulatory zone amendment findings are consistency with master plan, compatible land uses, response to change in conditions, availability of facilities, no adverse effects, and desired pattern of growth. Staff was able to make all the required findings for both regulatory zone amendment and the master plan amendment. Staff is recommending approval for both the proposals. I've provided a possible motion above for the master plan amendment, as well as the regulatory zone amendment. Those same possible motions can be found in your packet. And I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chris. Do we have an applicant presentation?
We do.
Thank you. My name is Ryan Rogers, and I'm the Senior Vice President of Development at Pedcore Investments. First, I would like to thank Chris and the Washoe County Planning and Building Division. They're very informative and very helpful throughout this process. Just to give you a little background about Pedcore Investments, we are an affordable, multifamily development company based out of Indianapolis, Indiana. We have 30,000 affordable units across 20, about 22 different states. And our intention here is to do an affordable development. I know there's been some statements about the number of units, and I thank you for pointing out that everything that we're talking about as opposed to what's going in here is actually proposed because we can't get into that until we actually effectively had zoning. But we have submitted an application to the Washoe County Home Consortium for home funds for this development, based on a 240-unit, 60% and 50% AMI light tech development, which would be in the upper end of affordability. And I'm proud to announce that today, Washoe County Home Consortium awarded us $200,000 in home funds to support the fruition of this development, if we're able to be successful in being able to construct this. What's difficult about affordable developments, and the reason why there's such a huge demand, especially for developments like this, is typically affordable developments are smaller. They're what are called 9% tax credits, and they serve the very low income ranges. Developments like this only get 4% tax credits awarded by the state, and they allowed us to do larger projects in the 200-plus unit range, but also allow us to serve incomes up to $60,000, which are what are the most demanding need for employers and businesses in the areas right now. Is, they want, workers want to live where they work. And that's why businesses are having a tough time because all the workers are being pushed further and further away because affordability issues. And so we, again, that's a proposal for this. I know that we have also been working with the Washoe County in order to provide additional open space. And you'll see in this amendment, we are providing about five acres of open space from this property. In addition to that, we will not be able to build due to the topography on the southern portion of this development, and the northern portion due to some water. So we are working with the county in order to, if we are successful in being able to move forward, to provide access to open space on both the northern and southern end of this development. We would want that for an amenity, not just for the community, but also for potential residents. And again, thank you for letting us speak today. We appreciate it. And I think, Chris?
And I'm Chris Wector with Kidney Horn Civil Engineering, also working with the project. And this is a exhibit of the existing parcel right here, oriented north to the right. And you can see all the different access routes, five main routes to the parcel right now.
Thank you, gentlemen. Is there?
Sorry, some more slides.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I just located the clicker.
You paused.
And then as Chris pointed out, this is the proposed zoning change, a little bit more detail against the property line that we're looking to make with open space in the back, and then a medium-density urban in the front. As, as was said earlier, the zoning is changing from medium-density suburban, three units per acre, to an increased density of medium-density urban, 21 units per acre. And that is a current allowed use in the Sun Valley Area Plan of the Washoe County Master Plan in the Suburban Character Management Area, as seen on the right exhibit there. This is a quick exhibit of the slopes on site. You can see that we've delineated out the, the westerly portion of the site. This would be exhibit north of the boundary. And a lot of the topography starts to go up more steeply, as you can see on the western side, whereas the topography more to the eastern side is more flat, in that greener, 0% to 15% area. Ryan, do you want to?
Sure, these are just some photographs of other developments that, that we have done affordable housing in. We would limit this, again, this is proposed, but within the amendments, it would be only two stories. The length of the site allows us to stay off of the topography down low and spread out over a long distance. I think our density on this would be, the proposed 240 units would be just below seven units per acre, and wouldn't be concentrated in one portion of the site. It would go all the way from about Second to Fifth Avenue. And certainly here for any questions that you might have on that.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Before we get to commission questions, is there any public comment at this time?
Yes, we have Mark Newman.
Good evening, again, commissioners. For the record, Mark Newman, resident of Sun Valley. Okay, Sun Valley is pretty much a rural area, and is designated as rural Washoe County. And what they are proposing to do up on the backside, along, along the hillside, on the west side of Sun Valley, the exits going through, the roads are horrible, traffic's really bad. It is, is right now low-density suburban, which is three units per acre. And there's a lot of development that's going in at the north end of Sun Valley. There's a large apartment complex right down the street, which is on First and McGuffrey, which will be 248 units, just south of this development that they're asking me put in on West Second, and West Second Street there as well. They're going to be putting in 48 more single-family homes. At the north end, there's five ridges with all of the traffic. Right now, the fire department, our infrastructure and everything else, we, the Sun Valley Fire Department gets, last month alone, had 197 calls in one month. That's the most in Washoe County. There is no plans in future development at all until the master plan of 2040 to do anything with the Truckee Meadows Fire Department that's out there. And by the time all of this development gets completed, and if they're, the units that they're talking about is just going to way overstress the Sun Valley infrastructure, along with the roads, the fire, and sheriffs. As it is, sometimes you call a sheriff, it might take 15, 20 minutes or longer. I've seen it take up to 35 minutes for them to get there. This is really, really, really not necessary for Sun Valley. We need to keep it low-density. If you want to do development, do a low-density suburban and keep it houses, please. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Next, we have Carol Burns.
My name is Carol Burns. I'm a resident of Sun Valley. I'd like to quote you the Master Plan, Volume 2, for Sun Valley. Character Statement: The community expresses a strong desire to manage growth levels and traffic patterns so that the traffic congestion and related air pollution quality do not reach undesirable levels. Vision: Managed growth and its associated impacts in Sun Valley, focusing on... Vision: Managed growth and its associated impacts in Sun Valley focusing on, oh, she be, on the surrounding public lands and upgrading the quality of the built environment while respecting private property rights. Character statement: Open vistas of surrounding ridges and public lands managed by BLM and Washoe County are important, identifying characteristics of the Sun Valley planning area. Retaining these lands as open space and continued access to the lands is paramount to the valley's character. The goal in this particular statement was maintain open vistas of the surrounding ridges and hills, minimizing the visual impact of hillside development. This project is on the hill. It will impact a great many people on the west side. As Mr. Newman stated, we already have a large development on the west side of Sun Valley with more traffic. You people don't understand what we're going through there. Everybody cuts through from Pyramid because they don't want to get stuck at Pyramid and McCarran. Next year, they're going to start working on Pyramid. Mr. Malloy, I spoke to him in 2023, and he said they're going to start at Queen's Way. So everyone's going to be coming through Sun Valley. Between the traffic and the air pollution and our safety problems, we ask that you deny this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Luis Codoy.
Thank you, commissioners, again for hearing me. Luis Codoy for the record. Just want to reiterate what has already been mentioned and what many other community members of Sun Valley live, you know, want to say. One of the things also, and as mentioned, this is Sun Valley, valley, not a metropolis. So this, I know this, again, this is a meeting regarding rezoning, and I want to stick to that. However, when you do make a change towards this, like a rezoning to something, and like, again, that's why I mentioned, why not rezonate to open space? Because it is a slippery slope. Once it goes to a rezoning, you know, again, I'm a scientist. I follow, you know, experiments. I go from A to B to C. You know, this whole commission and all these regulations, everything fits the definition and the multi-use and all that. I understand that, yes. And from that, you can go, yes, this is okay. We can accept it because it fits and it fits. However, when you look at, like I said, as a scientist, have to take away sometimes away from the numbers and look at, look at the effect that is occurring. There is a, there are two elementary schools alongside Hill that connect. And then looking in that large, like that picture again of this parcel, there's a, there's an elementary school already where there's a proposed development on First Street right there. There's already a lot of traffic on there in the morning between, you know, nine o'clock and 10, when everyone's going, taking their kids to school, at, from 3:00, whatever, until 4:00. A lot of traffic again. There's a couple of stop signs. People just don't, don't use them anymore because they're in a rush to getting anything. You're gonna, you know, again, this is a rezoning. However, accepting this rezoning and going to proposed development is only going to allow more people to come through. We, you know, open spaces is what Sun Valley has always been about. The area, as you see, is a parcel that is used by a lot of people, recreation, horses. We still have horses out there, you know. People use horses, ATVs. The proposed topography, yes, there are some hills. I'm a trail runner, so it's good for me. Yeah, I'll run up steep hills because that's what I do. But, you know, there are people that they just use because some of it is linear, flat, nice trails. They're not going to be able to use this proposal, like five little acres that they can't build on, you know, this going to be open space. It's like, yeah, good for me. I can do like, you know, five acre little run there, you know, for me, training for a 100-mile run. However, you know, elderly later someone, it's not going to be useful. So please, again, I just ask you, please listen to what has been already reiterated. I don't want to bore you with those things, but just come to you. And then again, just think about the excess burden. I know it says this, it was said that the water capacity and all that can be. Just look at our neighboring states. Salt Lake City, that, Salt Lake is already drying up. All these excess burdens on our water supply needs to be looked at in the future. I mean, it really needs to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Sandra Ely.
Hi, my name is Sandra Easley. Sorry about earlier. I don't know what I'm really supposed to say, but, um, okay. I was a secretary one time before, and I used to do outside, so I didn't do what you guys did. So anyway, we bought this property because of the mountain and that there was, not going to be really anything there, is what I thought, just the ATVs and, and that sort of thing. And I just have a list, and it wasn't really important. Everything was just what I wanted to say. So here we go. So I love the sky at night, and I'm a spacehound. I love looking at the stars and satellites and, and the constellations and, and things like that. And I know that the, everything will be lit up for the, for the cars because they're just in little spaces. Everybody's going to say, oh, this is where I live and, and whatever. So I know that will be out because we're on Fourth and Chocolate right there, and everything will be like that. And I don't like it. Sorry. If the, like I said, I put that already. Thank you. And what about the, the animals? Because we're starting to run out of room for them because they're all going to have to move to like Montana or, you know, somewhere north. Because the coyotes, the rabbits, the hares, the lizards. I actually like lizards and stuff, so that's cool. But we are running out of room for them. And people, they ride their horses and walk their dogs and exercise and stuff. We have people just coming down the street with one horse and taking another to try and train them and, and help them because we really, we took pictures of them and all kind of stuff. We have multiple people ride their dirt bikes and their ATVs. And a lot of people, like last Christmas, got ATVs and stuff, and that's a whole lot of money for somebody to not be able to ride their stuff anymore. I think that's dumb. Okay. I'm almost done. If it's going to be low income, I'm really going to transplant somewhere anywhere dealing drugs. People will be coming 24/7, and we don't, we don't want that either. What about, let's see, are we going to get money? Because people are going to, I have allergies. My cat has allergies. Can I get somebody money to get rid of my medical stuff? Because that'll suck. So let's see. Well, we have a power company on our, on our door. They're going to have to fix that. Yeah, because if they do three-bedroom bath, whatever, on one, it'd be 5,000-plus people right there. I can't remember. What about the waters? I don't understand that. So, yeah, I guess I had a couple of things to say, but I guess I'm done. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Ladies, anyone else at this time?
No for the comment in chambers.
Yes, Katie.
I do have hands raised via Zoom. Victor Reyes, I'm going to allow you to speak. If you could please unmute and state your first and last name.
And state your first and last name for the record.
Hi, my name is Victor Reyes. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, you have the floor, sir.
Okay, perfect. So, you know, I, I think a lot is being said when it comes down to, to the traffic. I think that would be a main concern. My dad, my dad used to work, and he retired from Q and D construction. There was talks that, you know, potentially there was going to be an additional highway that could potentially go through. Chocolate Drive, you know, I'm not quite sure exactly how the development was, you know, never really caught my attention until all this started happening. But one of the main things and main concerns would be, one, the traffic. We live off of Fifth Street. There's not enough lighting, you know, and with all this traffic coming along, I think it's going to be a big concern. Now, the developers are talking about, you know, affordable housing. So now, my question to the county is, are we going to really hold them accountable to really provide the affordable housing if, if, if the project will go through? Because, you know, that's how every development starts, you know. They talk about the affordable housing. Next thing you know, prices start skyrocketing, looking at interest rates and, and the housing market at this moment. You know, there's hardly any people that can even qualify for a home loan or affordable housing because rents are going to be so expensive. So I think the, the main question for, for the county would be if, if this developer, developers will be regulated to what the, what the affordable housing, if, if a budget plan has been provided to, to, to see exactly, you know, what the, you know, household income, if it's going to be based on the median household income in the county. So it's a lot of more questions to, to be asked to the developers rather than just, you know, here we have a development and we're going to be able to provide more housing. Okay, so is it really going to be regulated to them? Or what are we looking for to do or to bring to, to the people in the community? Also, additional things that they can provide to the community, such as, you know, better lighting on the streets, as, as they mentioned, it's not safe enough when people even walk in at night and adding this additional traffic that could, you know, potentially be more dangerous. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have Kathy.
Thank you, sir. I have Kathy.
I'm going to allow you to speak. If you could please unmute and state your first and last name for the record.
My name is Kathy Reynolds. Thank you again, commissioners, for hearing me tonight regarding this Chocolate Group LLC. And listening to the developer talking, I think he's speaking a little bit out of, out of turn. They're indicating that they have all of these access points into this property, which in fact is not correct. They have maybe two streets that the county maintains that they would have access. West Fourth is dirt and is not maintained by the county, so it's private road, which they do not have access to because that would come through the landowners. And there's another couple of streets that are dirt as well that are considered private. Chocolate itself is considered a private road. It is dirt. The county does not maintain it. In the wintertime, even the garbage trucks won't go up there because the road is so terrible. So that's one of the things that I think that you need to look at because you're putting the burden in the rezoning, if you consider it, on the landowners currently who personally pay to maintain the private roads. And you're going to add 240 apartments with the extra traffic that's coming on the privately, privately owned roads since that developer doesn't have access to those. Another thing that the developer, developer spoke about at the meeting at Hobie's is, you know, they're not going to be fencing off this property. So all of us that own property around that are going to be dealing with all of their traffic going in and out, the lighting for all of their carports or parking that they're going to have, the extra crime that we're going to get with the, if it's low-income housing or even affordable housing, that's more people you're bringing in. And those of us that really, right off of that development are now going to have to worry about crime coming from that area down into our neighborhoods. And when you're looking at the, the streets out here, a main road that we have, Side Hill, you don't have gutters or sidewalks even for people to walk on. Everybody's walking in the street. So I think that those are things you need to consider as well as the fire department and the police response that's going to be out here. As Mr. Newman stated, nothing's going to happen with Truckee Meadows Fire until 2040, and this is already going to be out there. So I do plead for you to please consider not approving this based on the fact that this developer doesn't have access to this site and just for the sheer magnitude of crime and traffic that they're bringing into our area that we're already suffering with. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. I have Robert with his hand raised. I'm going to allow you to speak. If you could unmute and please state your first and last name for the record.
Yeah, my name is Robert Watley, and I, and I live on West Fourth. My concerns are as many, it's the traffic, it's the unmaintained roads by the county, it's the ways in and ways out. Are they going to go behind the elementary school over to Dandini for a new access point and also tie into another area? Well, they got Seventh Street. But then I have a problem with the crime as well. And it's not going to be a gated community because it's going to be low income, which is fine. But then like the lady just stated, we have no sidewalks. People already drive up and down West Fourth doing like 40 miles an hour because lack of law enforcement, which is not their fault. They just don't have the funding. Are they going to give additional funding to the sheriffs or to Washoe County to hire additional officers to, for the increase in population, the traffic, I mean, and all that stuff? It's just, I don't have a problem with the growth. I just have a problem with the plan. It's, there's no real plan to better anything. It's just a plan to put something down on the ground and make, and, you know, make a little bit of money here and there. And so, I mean, if they're talking about improving the track, traffic situation on Fourth Street, Sun Valley Boulevard tying into Dandini to where it could relieve some of the traffic coming from Golden Valley instead, because they all, right now, because of the construction they're going through, they're all cutting through here as well. And so what are they going to do to improve our roads? And for pedestrians, like the one gentleman said, we, just to see a plan and to say, yeah, go ahead with it is, it would be, you know, irresponsible. So, I mean, I just, I want to know what they're going to do to better the roads and the pedestrian situation and stuff like that. And are they going to, also, I know I worked with plenty, another developer who paid to build a fire station so the county could hire more firemen to accommodate the development that he was building. Are they able to do that? Are they willing to even try to do that or anything like that? Not just let us come in and build. And I mean, thank you for letting me talk, but that's all I have to say.
Thank you. I have no further hands raised via Zoom, but I would like to state for the record, we did receive one emailed public comment on this item from Carmen Ortiz. That was shared with the commissioners prior to the meeting and posted to the county website.
Thank you, Lacey. So at this point, there's no more public comment?
We're all clear.
All right. Then at that point, I will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions of staff, applicant, or members of the public. Commissioners.
Chair Doncheck.
Yes, Vice Chair Willcheck.
Thank you. This is for staff and maybe for the applicant, but we'll start with Chris. And I'll, from the get-go, so if anybody is going to say, I know this is an RZA and an, you know, map, you know, it's a zone amendment and such. From past experience, I was on the Regional Parks and Open Space Commission for a number of years. And during that time, the Red Hill concept map was brought for us for an open space project. There is a protected species, plant species on that. I see no reference in this plan for that. Can you address that?
So this was presented, provided to our parks staff. I know of the protected plant species that you are referring to. I did the Ladera Ranch project directly to the west. That one was more impacted by that protected species. My understanding is that species of plant is not impacted by this, but we did not receive any comments related to it from parks.
I appreciate that. And when I looked at it, at a map that I was trying to find again without success, is that the, there is a growing pattern that is close to this proposed plan. And so with, with clearing of land and such, that would be problematic. But just so, it sounds as if you are aware of that species. Additionally, when, if you could help me understand why an urban development next to open space is a good idea?
So you have a multiple area plan recommend, I'm sorry, you have multiple area plan policies that recommend a variety of low, medium, high density. You also have multiple master plan policies that recommend affordable housing options as well as density options. Additionally, we saw this as a area that was designated for growth based off of the character statement, which says the SEMA was based off of that. MDU is allowed within suburban character management, and we went forward.
In terms of Washoe County Regional Open Space and Natural Resource Management Plan, Goal 6.1 strongly discourage high-density development near open space areas and consider Plan, Goal Six One, strongly discourage high-density development near open space areas and consider the downward transitioning of densities next to or near open space areas in order to minimize resource pressure, fire danger, and other negative impacts.
Yes. So I met with the Parks and Open Space Planner regarding this policy. This policy is what initiated the, uh, um, split zoning related to the open space along the corridor of Red Hill Open Space and the proposed medium-density urban, uh, to the south along the less steep areas.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Any further questions from the commissioners? I just wanted to put a point out of something, like I said, I'm very concerned about safety. And in here, it clearly states the Washoe County Emergency Medical Services Oversight Program stated there may be impacts regarding EMS responses to the area particularly during peak hours. Um, that's on there. And then they talked about with the dwellings may increase the, the healthcare system in the region. And then they talked about the traffic study indicates 109 average daily trips will be generated. So what is brought out by the public, what is the concern for the, I know this is a regional zoning, just zoning changes, but we all have concerns for emergency responses in our areas.
So it's a little difficult for me to speak on behalf of EMS.
Uh, Secretary Lloyd, if you'd like.
Did have conversations with representatives from EMS a while back and, uh, they asked how they could become more, um, more involved with, uh, with our applications and our, our development review process. And, um, you know, what, I, I think what we are looking for is, um, not, not so much broad general terms, but more how can these, these concerns be mitigated by means of, of, of conditions? Um, I, again, I think what you find is when there are large projects, it's going to be a tax on, on these types of resources. They're limited, uh, at least initially until funds become more available and they, they ultimately do become available as, as, um, you know, funding, uh, through development, uh, it happens. And, and that's just a, a natural, um, you know, process. However, in the short term, you know, there certainly are concerns due to the increase in, in density and, and the increase in, in, in potential, um, new clients in, in the community. So, um, you know, unfortunately with a, a master plan and a reg zone amendment request, we do not have the option of, of conditioning. It's basically a change of a color on a map. And based on that, we have to determine whether or not that stands on its own merits without those type of mitigating conditions, which will happen at the time of a, a tentative map application. So there will be an opportunity, a second bite at the apple, if you will, for EMS to, uh, to provide comments and, and conditions with the tentative map application.
Thank you, Secretary Lloyd, for that clarification. Any other, uh, questions at this time for the, Commissioner Flick?
Madam Chairman, um, I had a...
It's on.
I've got to get a foot closer to you.
Okay. Madam Chairman, I have a question, um, in the availability of facilities, there are, there are, or are planned to be adequate transportation, rest recreation utility. My, my question is, what's included in the transportation? Are we talking about, are we talking about public transportation or are we talking about streets? Um, what does that mean?
So when we're talking about, um, we're talking typically about streets, we're talking about public transportation, uh, RTC routes. Uh, additionally, with the availability of facilities, you're talking about, um, water, sewer, uh, and that kind of thing. So with...
So I'm not quite sure. So are we talking about streets?
That is part of it, yes.
Beg your pardon?
That is part of it, yes.
That's part of it?
Yes.
Okay. In the catch-all term, um, I guess, uh, is they either exist or, or planned for. And I guess that's the, that's the biggest question is whether they're going to be there.
So right now, with this being a master plan amendment and a rezone, we don't have a project before us. How, when a project does come, typically what happens, we, we send it to all the various reviewing agencies, including engineering. If there's impacts to streets, they are required or will be required to bring those up to county standards, uh, more often than not. And so if there's issues related to a development that goes here, engineering does have that ability to require that. Again, if it's a public easement or public roadway.
Thank you, Chris. Commissioner Phillips, you had a question?
Yes, I did. Thank you. I just need a clarification. This is basically to change from a high-density suburban to a medium-density urban?
It's to do a zone change. It's a master plan amendment and a regulatory zone from medium-density suburban, which allows for three dwellings per acre, to medium-density urban, which allows for 21 dwellings per acre. So it's going from suburban residential to urban.
So in other words, what it has been currently, seven units per acre?
No. Currently it is three dwellings per acre.
Okay, because this would allow 21 units per acre with a change?
That is correct. 21 units for multifamily specifically.
Any other questions at this time, commissioners? Thank you, Chris, especially for that clarification. I know this is a master zone amendment only, but some of the questions help give a little bit of a clarification for everyone. So at this point, I will bring it back to the commission for any discussion or a motion? Well, okay. Um, again, I first off want to thank Chris and I want to thank the, the applicant for their, for their stuff. And I'm going to try and make a motion.
Well, may I ask a question of counsel? So I will make a motion, but, um, I may vote differently than the motion. Is that okay? I mean, in the motion states that...
There is no requirement that the maker of the motion vote.
Yeah, I mean, that's obviously not typical, but no.
That's why I hesitated.
Yeah, you can make a motion and then you can also vote in opposition to your own motion, as long as there's, as long as there's a second to your motion. You can, you can do that. I, that's odd, certainly.
I'm curious as to why there's an unwillingness to make this motion, but, um, so...
Commissioner Doncic. I move that after giving reason and consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission adopt the resolution contained as Exhibit A to the staff report to amend the master plan as set forth in Master Plan Amendment Case Number WMPA 22-0003, having made at least three of the five findings required by Washoe County Code Section 110. 820.15D and Sun Valley Area Plan Policy S U N 13.1. I further move to certify the resolution and the proposed master plan amendments in WMPA 22-003 as set forth in the staff report for submission to the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners and authorize the chair to sign the resolution on behalf of the planning commission.
Um, Councilperson, do, should we do both of these together or separately?
I feel like they're... Make a regulatory zone amendment motion at this time? You may do so, Mr. Payton.
I would like to. I move that after given reason and consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the planning commission adopt the resolution contained as Exhibit B to the staff report recommending adoption of Regulatory Zone Amendment Case Number WRZA 22-0003, having made all of the following findings in accordance with Washoe County Code Section 110.821.15. I further move to certify the resolution and propose Regulatory Zone Amendment in WRZA 22-0003 as set forth in the staff report for the submission to Washoe County Board of Commissioners and authorize the chair to sign the resolution on behalf of the Washoe County Planning Commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Payton. Do we have a second?
This is Commissioner Sevilcek. I will second.
Thank you, Commissioner Sevilcek. Is there any further discussion at this time?
I request a roll call vote.
We are requesting a roll call vote, if that's possible?
Yes. Larry Chesney?
Uh, no.
Sarah Sevilcek?
No, I cannot make findings one or two in the master plan amendment or the regulatory zone amendment.
Brancy Doncic?
No. I concur with, uh, Vice Chair Sevilcek's motions.
Michael Flick?
No.
Commissioner Nelson?
No, I cannot find findings number two, three, four, and also under Sun Valley 13.1, item number three.
Thank you. Commissioner Payton?
Aye.
And Commissioner Phillips?
No, because of compatible land uses and availability of facilities.
Okay, I'd like to request that those of you who just said no, um, would state which findings you could not make, um, for the record.
I believe everybody did except me, and I, I could do that.
Okay, I don't, I'm...
I did the two.
Yeah, she did. Okay.
Yeah, I, I can't make findings one, two, four, and five.
And was that for the master plan or...
Commissioner Chesney.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Chesney. Was that, um, for the master plan or the regulatory zone or both? There are different findings?
That's for the regulatory zone amendment and on the master plan, I can't make, uh, one and three.
Thank you. And Commissioner Flick? I, I didn't catch yours, which findings you could not make.
Yes, uh, four. Four and two.
Under the master plan amendment or the regulatory zone amendment?
Master plan.
Okay, thank you.
Chair Doncic.
Yes, Vice Chair Sevilcek.
I would like to add to my findings in term of Sun Valley Area Plan Policy, number three, that I can't make that finding.
I, I believe that I caught everything. I'll confer with my colleague. So that was six, um, not in favor and one in favor.
So at this point, the motion is denied. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Madam Chair, if I could read the appeal procedure?
Yes, Secretary.
Thank you. Most decisions rendered by the planning commission are appealable to the Board of County Commissioners. If you disagree with the decision of the planning commission and you qualify as an aggrieved person or party, you may appeal in writing within 10 calendar days from the date that the decision being appealed is reduced to writing, filed with the secretary of the planning commission, and mailed to the original applicant in the proceeding being appealed in accordance with Washoe County Code. Please call the planning staff immediately at 328-6100 for information on the appeal procedure and the application fee.
Thank you, Secretary Lloyd. Um, moving right along, we are under item eight C. If you would read that into the record, please?
Surely. Now, this is special use permit, case number WSUP 220001 and tentative subdivision map case number WTM 22001 for the continuum of care cottages.
Hold on, we may, hold on, maybe we may want to put a hold for a couple of minutes to allow people to leave if they'd like? If that's all right?
All people, you have a long flight. It's just the beginning. Because it'll be up here, up in the food, then it begins.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, I think we're ready to go back on track for item eight C. Secretary Lloyd, if you could read it into the record, please? Thank you.
Okay, absolutely, Madam Chair. Uh, special use permit, case number WSUP 220001 and tentative subdivision map case number WTM 22001, uh, continuum of care cottages. Now, for hearing, discussion, and possible action to approve, one, a special use permit for a continuum of care for seniors in accordance with Table C 3 of the Spanish Springs Area Plan, a portion of the Washoe County Master Plan, and for major grading, uh, to grade 55,000 cubic yards of imported material, and, two, a common open space tentative subdivision map on 21.56 acres for 136 lots ranging in size from 2,004 square feet to, uh, 2,400 square feet, representing Washoe County. On this matter is Staff Planner Julie Olander.
All right, Julie, before we get started, of course, I'm going to ask my standard, are there any disclosures by commissioners, either ethics or ex parte? Hearing none. Thank you, Julie.
Good evening. This is Julie Olander with Planning and Building. It's not moving. So this is a request for a special use permit for continuum of care for seniors according to the Washoe, um, the Spanish Springs Area Plan, and then also for grading of 55,000 cubic yards of material. And then also for a common open space, for a sub, um, common open space tentative subdivision map for, uh, a site of 21.5 acres for 136 lots. And the, um, lots will range in size from 2,004 square feet to 2,400 square feet. Here is where the site is located. Um, it's primarily on one parcel, however, there's a little portion on the neighboring parcel. And this is off of Neighborhood Way, which is off of Eagle Canyon. So as I said, this is for continuum of care. And as continuum of care is defined, it requires, um, housing element, um, activities and 24-hour skilled nursing or medical care for adults to age in place. So concerning the medical care, the applicant provided information that indicated the, um, development will provide emergency medical, emergency medical station, which will be located at the Village Center, um, which is the main area, um, main building in the, in the development, and that will be available 24/7. Also, the medical station will be, um, they'll find a defibrillator there, a fully stocked for state kit, heart monitoring device, and residents will also have the option to wear a mo, a mobile device around their necks. The applicant also stated that, um, staff will be provided with basic medical and first aid training, and they will be available 24/7 as residents need them. We've also added a condition asking that the medical, um, the staff that's, um, working that medical station is required to have a basic life support certification, and that's something you get through REMZA. Concerning the activities for the continuum of care, um, site, the, um, they're, the applicant's proposing to have a fitness center, a dog wash, a bistro, and activities room and common area within that Village Center, um, location. And then that outdoor, outdoor, outdoor activities will include bocce ball, horseshoe, and other lawn games. And that will happen in that little triangle area that I showed you previously. Village Center will also have a range of social activities and programs for their residents, and, um, staff will arrange ongoing speakers and on a range of health and wellness topics. The application indicates that these amenities should... The application indicates that these amenities should provide the residents with the opportunity for social engagement and will limit isolation. Concerning the continuum of care, concerning housing, the residence will be one-story and will be built to accommodate seniors with zero thresholds, wide hallways and doorways, support handles in the bathrooms with other bath amenities, along with motion sensor lighting in appropriate locations and fire sprinklers in all units. The applicant states the universal home design features will be utilized to help preserve a safe living environment for aging residents, and the houses will be individually owned, and the applicant states allowing for fee simple ownership in a safe home with supportive services will engage seniors to live independently longer while maintaining their financial savings. Concerning the grading, as I said, the site, they're proposing to import 55,000 cubic yards to construct the buildings. The site is relatively flat, but because of that imported material, they do meet the major thresholds for major grading, and that requires a special use permit. No material is anticipated to be exported, and then all disturbed areas will either be developed or landscaped. There's a potential of rocky walls that will be no more than six feet in height along the western and eastern areas of the site. For the tentative map evaluation, the site will be developed, as I said, with 136 single-family detached residents on the 21.5 acre site. The gross density will be 6.3 per acres with 4.67 acres of right-of-way and 10.42 areas of common space. The lots will range, as I said early, from 2,004 square feet to 2,400 square feet. With zero lot lines, the houses will be built to the lots. They will fill up the whole lot. So that gives them a zero lot line setback, and then the distance between the homes will be at least 10 feet. The proposal is for three residential house plans with styles with two bedrooms or two bedrooms and a den, with two car garages and two parking spaces in the driveway. And as I said earlier, primarily, the residents are all located on the large 20.75 acre parcel, and then the outdoor activities are located in the .81 parcel, which is a portion of 11 acre parcel, and they'll be connected by a pathway, and both parcels are owned by the same owners. Here's an overview of the parcel, of the houses, of the development to the, sort of the northern, sort of, it looks like it's east-west, but it's really north-south, and you can sort of see on the far right where the Village Center is. It's right around there where that circular drive is. And then you can see where the Village Center continues, and then you can see that portion of the property to the, well, it's to the upper part of the page, and that's where the outdoor activities will be. So here are the three different basic schematics of the houses. They're going to have a contemporary ranch, a traditional ranch, and a rustic ranch. And then these are the different floor plans. You've got, the first floor pan is 24, I mean, 1,273, and the second floor pan is the 1,400. In the 1,400, you can see in the top part of that plan, they have a family section, so a family room area, so it's a little bit larger. And then, and this one's 1579 square feet, and that has an additional bedroom or den. They call it flex. The parcel has a master plan of commercial, as does the parcels to the south and the parcel across Neighborhood Way. The parcel to the east is open space, and that's where the North Spanish Springs Flood Detention Facility Outlet Channel is located, and the parcel to the north is suburban residential, and that's where Eagle Canyon subdivision is located. Then for the zoning, the parcel is neighborhood commercial, as is the parcel to the south and the parcel across Neighborhood Way, and then the parcel east where the channel is is open space, and the parcel to where Eagle Canyon is is medium-density suburban. And here's sort of an overview. You see on the left-hand side is the master plan, and on the right is the zoning. There are other senior housing facilities in the area. Recently, there was approved vintage at Spanish Springs. It's a 257 four-story building for continuum care, and it's located at the corner of Eagle Canyon, Neighborhood Way. And then the Silverado Continuum of Care Facility, it's 157 unit, and it was approved in 2020, not 2002, and it's located at Neighborhood Way. And then also Cascades of the Sierra, which is primarily assisted living and memory care, and it's also located on Neighborhood Way. And here you can sort of see, so we have, I couldn't get the numbers that show on the map for whatever reason, so I went with stars. So the black star is the vintage at Spanish Springs, the orangish one is the Cascades, that's the memory care, and then the green is the Silverado, it should be continuum of care facility. And then you can see across the street is where the proposal is, the new development is proposed to be. Sewer services provided by Washoe County, water service by Tamoa. Tamoa, there was a report in the application indicating that they have the water supply that's needed for the project, and then the other utilities are all already in place because of the other facilities that are in that location. The closest fire station is Station 46, and that's approximately one mile from the site, and it's on the corner of Rockwell and La Posada to the east. The drainage of the site will consist of sheet flows from the building to a system of gutters. On-site flows will be directed to the existing channel to the east, that North Springs, Spanish Springs Flood Detention Facility channel, and then the flows will go towards the south to Eagle Canyon Drive, and ultimately to Sparks Regional Detention Basin, the North Truckee Drain, and then the Truckee River. There's also a channel to the west of Neighborhood Way, and that discharges to the south of the project. The existing drains, drainage ways, should it be drainage ways, I apologize, have the capacity to handle the proposed flow, and there should be no negative impacts to the neighboring properties according to the applicant. As I said, the site is located off of Neighborhood Way, which is a two-way, a two-lane arterial with a seater, center, medium, and sidewalks on both sides. The site will have three access points, with the middle access as the primary entrance, and the two others will be gated for emergency only. The internal roads will be private, and the applicants indicated that the development would generate 301 average daily trips with 10 AMP trips and 200, and I apologize, it says tips, and should be trips, 300 average daily trips, not tips, 10 AMP peak hour trips, and 27 PM peak hour trips. The proposed improvements will include signage and striping, and the overall traffic's not anticipated to be of significant impacts to the area. For parking, basically, the code leaves it up to the special use process to determine if they have enough parking. As I said earlier, there had, each residence has a two-car garage, and they'll be parking in the driveway for two cars. The applicant is proposing 90 other guest park, parking spaces throughout the site. So this is getting into the more, more of a difficult area, because as I, I'll start off at the very top. The applicant is requesting to create a common open space commercial subdivision with 136 lots for a continuum of care facility that is a commercial use, and that requires a business license, and the HOA will need to obtain and maintain the business license for the commercial use. This is the first time we've had this come before Washoe County, so it's new territory for all of us. However, the applicant has indicated that the request will require a guarantee from the homeowners and will be, will maintain, the homeowners association will maintain the commercial use while owning, while the individual, individuals own their own homes, and the applicant, applicant states that the HOA will establish that by governing of the CCNRs, and those will be recorded against all property in the project, and that the CCNRs create a deed restriction on all housing units requiring compliance with the continuum of care features and obligate the HOA to provide the continuum of care services. And the applicants have their attorney here to further explain this, because I, it's sort of out of my league. However, the CCNRs also will restrict that at least one of the residents is 62 years or older, and the HOA will maintain all the common areas, the landscaping, streets, and open space, and also the continuum of care amenities that are located in the Village Center and elsewhere. Additionally, the applicant, application and the staff report did provide further information on the HOA, and then there are additional HOA requirements in the conditions of approval. This is also a common open space development, and as you know, the common open space development has specific requirements, and they include to set forth regulations to permit variations of lot sizes, including density transfer subdivisions, in order to preserve or provide open space, protect natural and scenic resources, achieve a more efficiency of use of land, minimize road building, and encourage a sense of community. Staff has concluded that the application meets the purpose of Article 408 by providing open space and achieving a more efficient use of land with the smaller lots. Further, they have proposed, proposing paths and common areas that will provide areas to gather and encourage a sense of community. The applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting on March 30th. Notices were sent out to 105 property owners, and one person participated in the meeting. Meeting lasted about 35 minutes and included a presentation on the project by the applicant. The participant asked questions regarding the project timeline to start the construction and if this would be a gated community and a flood canal. Property owners within 500 feet of the site were noticed, and 106 notices were sent out. Various agencies reviewed the application, and their comments are included in the staff report, and then agencies with conditions are, their comments, other conditions are included in the conditions of approval. Staff was able to make all of the findings for both the special use permit and the tentative subdivision map, and I provide a possible motion. And also, the applicant is available and has a presentation.
Thank you, Julie. If the applicant's ready? Thank you.
Stacy Huggins for the record with Wood Rogers. I'm not going to repeat what Julie said. She did a great job covering this project, so rather than me give you a duplicate presentation that talks about the details of this, I'm going to turn this over to Ed Johansson with Silverado Homes and let him talk a little bit more about the concept behind this project and what it's bringing to this community.
Good evening, Madam Chair and fellow commissioners. A pleasure to be here this evening, and as stated, my name is Edward Johansson, and I'm one of the principals and also president of Silverado Homes. I share Stacy's comment. Thank you so much, Julie, and Trevor and the rest of the staff worked very hard and very diligently on the project. This is a community and a type of community we've been involved in and developed in other areas for over 20, 25 years and is very much needed and important. It's a pleasure that we're offering the continuum of care community this evening, a community where mom and dad can truly age in place. So why is this important? Well, as many of us, as many of us are feeling today, and myself included, being one that's 65 and better, over the last several decades, that population and the seniors have been doubling in size, growing again to over 72 million nationwide by 2030. But also, very importantly, it's not just purely the numbers, but also seniors over the last several decades are increasingly living healthier and quite a bit longer. They're saying the 80s is the new 70s, the 90s the new 80s, and it's projected that in the next couple of decades, there will be over 500,000 of us that will live over 100 years of age. So it is critically important in every community as how we are preparing for this. So how are communities preparing for this or professionals such as ourselves at Silverado Homes? Well, I would say on either end of the age spectrum, they've been doing a pretty good job, starting over 50, 60 years ago with the Sun City, you see a lot of active adult communities. These are early retirees, generally looking for a more active lifestyle, whether that's bicycling, playing tennis, playing softball, or doing other activities, because they're in the early years of active adult living. At the end of life, more the end of senior activities, the traditional lodge, the assisted living, the memory care, such as Cascades Across the Street, have been around for even decades longer, and they've been, they've been building these facilities, but unfortunately, the general term of life that people are living in these facilities are less than three years. So what we have is what I refer to as the missing middle. With seniors living so much longer and for decades looking to live independently and successfully independently, super seniors, what I finally refer to as those 80-plus, are looking for alternative housing opportunities to safely and healthily live. That's in an independent living environment, but is necessary to do so requires supportive housing that is also designed with safety in mind, and also, very importantly, with needs-based services overlaying that. So what I mean independent living and accommodative housing, that is the incorporation into our communities of universal design features. There's a great emphasis on safety, and one of the most important safety elements in a home that is adhering to universal design is zero-step entries everywhere. We have that throughout every ingress and egress of our home, as well as throughout the community and all the common area facilities, as well as in the facilities. I can say it unequivocally, for a senior citizen, especially one at 80-plus or 90 who falls and breaks a hip, it could be not only life-altering, but life-ending for many. So it's a very, very critical part of that, of that universal design. We extend that into our showers with zero-entry showers. We also make sure our showers are large enough to not only accommodate standing up with a normal showerhead, but also wide, tall seating areas with separate control valves, separate handholds, and separate shower controls, so that you can safely shower while sitting down. We also look at bringing convenient height countertops with cabinets that open, so you can sit if you have a wheelchair or otherwise wanting to sit while preparing a meal. We also introduce that in the master bathroom as well. Together with, with convenient height appliances, we also look at eliminating stupid. Do not put a microwave over a hot stove. Put it at a convenient height where it's easy to reach with a place to set. Why the hallways and doorways? Of course, if you're going to age in place, you have to anticipate that somebody may at some point need a walker or a wheelchair, and they need to be able to get safely through their home. Fire sprinklers, clearly for safety, standard in every one of our, our houses. Supportive grab bars, we not only install in the necessary places, but we also add a lot of supportive backing throughout the house, so that as their needs change, they can add those grab bars successfully and easily in other areas of the home. Non-slip flooring, and we strongly encourage every senior that purchases a home, do not put down area rugs. If you want an area rug, do an insert so it's level surface without trip and fall. Motion activated lighting. Most seniors get, like myself, get up in the middle of the night to use the restroom. It's, unfortunately, it's a very often place where seniors will trip and fall and seriously injure themselves. We have motion activated lighting, and that lighting comes on gently and rises in elevation so your eyes can adjust when you're using the restroom facilities at night. Of course, importantly, something as simple as just raise the electrical outlets off the baseboards. Bring them up 18, 24 inches so it's easier to accommodate and plug in. Life alert pendants, so if there is in fact an emergency, you can summon help immediately and somebody can be there at your side assessing the situation. That is the universal side of the housing, but the second leg of an important part and component of having a successful continuum of care is also having supportive care services. Those include having ground maintenance being taken care of all around and throughout the community by, by our professional staff, but also some light duties for maintenance inside the home, especially things that are focused on safety. We jokingly say we confiscate ladders when people move into the homes, but we mean it. We do not want an elderly senior, when the smoke detector battery goes off in the middle of the night, getting up on that ladder to change it. We want our maintenance staff to take care of that, our 24/7 person that's there, available to do that. We gotta clean. We don't want seniors on ladders, period. In addition, 24/7 emergency response system, together with a 24/7 onsite personnel who In addition, 24/7 emergency response system, together with a 24/7 onsite personnel who, as Julie mentioned, is trained and properly there to be at their side to triage if there is in fact a real emergency, to assess that, to call 911 and be there while they wait for the person to, on that emergency staff to arrive. Our community center access, I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment, as well as wellness and fitness classes. But I do want to emphasize the shuttle services, both on and off-site. A lot of seniors, as they age, they don't drive or shouldn't drive, and especially for those that should not drive any longer, we try to make it easy. We have an onsite Jiffy, carts that bring people in and through the community to visit friends, to get to the village center, to get anywhere they want to get on the community. But we also have larger vans for off-site transportation, not just for daily recreational activities or, or the events, but also if you have a medical appointment you need to attend to or other shopping needs. And finally, safe gated community. Not only does that gated community reduce traffic flows inside the community, which is helpful, but also provides an additional level of safety, as well as our person that drives around 24/7 with the car at night that is overlooking and making sure the community is being monitored. So that's the second step of an important community that's a continuum of care. The third is one that involves both preference as well as financial, and that is patio home fee simple ownership. As we were talking, the missing, the missing middle, right? The missing middle can often be looking at living and housing for 10, 15-plus years. So first of all, make sure you build something that they prefer. Common sense and overwhelming, studies backed up repeatedly, 95% or more seniors want to age in place in a home or a home-like environment, not a lodge or an institutional setting. That may be necessary at some point, but not for the majority of that missing middle. So build what they want. Second is the financial security. Most seniors worry about their nest egg not surviving their longevity and especially increasing longevity. For those of you who have visited traditional lodge facilities, they're expensive. They could be $4,000, $5,000, $6,000 a month, and in some cases, based on acuity, could be upwards of $8,000 a month or more. Somebody living 10 or 15 years independently, as in the middle, missing middle, that can very quickly outstrip most, if not many, of the seniors' financial capacity. So homeownership is an affordable way. Our typical HOA dues is about $450 a month. That's one-eighth of what a traditional rental facility might cost. Preservation and protection of that equity nest egg, especially during inflationary times, that's very, very important because that is what is often used near end-of-life for those three years where you might need to be in assisted living or other skilled nursing. And having that protected for that future need is also critically important and homeownership does in fact preserve that. Our project location, as was mentioned, we're across the street from Cascades, which is very helpful because some of our residents will ultimately take advantage of that and is inside the community, we're north of Eagle Canyon and east of Neighborhood Way. As mentioned, we're going to be on about a 21-plus acres. We're 136 residences. And the reason why the lots are small is because only the fee simple is the home, the garage and the patio. Everything else is owned by the HOA and maintained by the HOA. That is why that lot is ultimately so small. Our homes, we actually do have four plans. They're right-sized from 1,200 to little over 1,700 square feet. They're great room plans, easy to navigate, coming down from a large home that you raised your families in over many decades. And we have two-car garages. Why is that? Well, it's not because our residents have two cars. In fact, very few ever have two cars. Most come in with one car and after a number of years, end up with no cars. So why is there a two-car? The most important thing after decades of living, you have a lot of accumulated items, personal things that you don't want to get rid of. You have your decorating items, my wife, A.K.A., and you need the garage space. Downsizing is a stressful thing for seniors and it's even more stressful when you don't have a place to keep those things. So having that garage attached to the house makes that move so much easier, especially when in comparison to moving into a one-bedroom apartment in a lodge-style facility, which is what really is the other alternative that is otherwise out there for, for seniors. The Village Center, a critical hub of the community, it's in the middle of the community. It's where social activities take place. We have water aerobics, a very popular one, very low-stress, excellent exercise. We have an activities room for a whole bunch of arts and crafts and other activities. Fitness with fitness equipment that's right-appropriate for seniors. Wellness programs, those are two sides of it. One, that's heavily focused on maintaining strength and balance and doing strength and balance classes because it's the minor muscles that are important to keep strong for balance so you don't fall. And then health and wellness classes and other classes, where we bring professionals in to help them with things of importance. The first aid room that was discussed, as well as other amenity areas. Why is this hub so important? It is so important because it's common sense again, but also studies invariably shown, if you, even if you can in fact retrofit a home in suburban America, which is almost impossible to do to incorporate the things that are critically important to age in place, but even if you were to do that, isolation creates a terrible situation for seniors when they age, especially when they no longer can drive. When the families leave that community during the day and weekends, they're busy. Isolation unfortunately is the depression and depression leads to the onset of a lot of illnesses and shortness of life. Often it is said, when a spouse passes away, the other spouse can pass away soon as a broken heart, and that's the truth. So our community is about getting people engaged, connected and working their mind, their body and their soul to keep them excited in their community. The gathering areas, our homes open up to Paseo pathway systems, gathering areas, not traditional lots, because you want to be engaged in the community. Raised garden beds throughout. We have pet areas, pets are very important to seniors, but they also create neighbors turning into friends because common bonds create common relationships. So it's a wonderful thing that brings the community together. Open space lawn areas for playing lawn games, bocce courts. Critically important, as I said earlier, Paseo trails connect all of our homes throughout the community. It's a safe way of getting around that community. It also connects all of the common area elements. But most important, it's the impromptu meetups that happen off of those common areas. You get somebody that comes in that's shy, that's introverted. In no time at all, the neighbor that's coming past, walking their dog or taking a stroll, starts chatting with them and before you know it, Mary down the street is their best friend coming for coffee before going down to the Village Center. So in closing, I want to thank you, but I want to emphasize that hopefully I've shown that a continuum of care community be truly successful and to fill out that missing middle. It's not one item. It's a multitude of items that all have to be successfully brought together in order to create that true living environment. It is for our mothers and fathers. My mother, who is 93, is living in my continuum of care community in Roseville and has been there for over 10 years and my, and my in-laws as well up in Placerville. My mother-in-law just passed away a couple of months ago. I'm here to answer any questions, as well as Stacy Huggins from Wood Rogers on anything further technical. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry I went through so fast with that. It was a lot of information in a short period of time. Thank you.
Ladies at this time, is there any public comment, either on Zoom or in chambers?
I have no comment in chambers and I have no hands raised via Zoom.
All right. Thank you very much. Then I will close the public comment and bring it back to the commission if there are any questions. Hearing no questions is either call back for a discussion or call for a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Before I make the motion, I, I want to really congratulate you guys on your forward-thinking for this community. They're absolutely needed. I think you're, you're going to fill a niche that hasn't existed around here since I've been up here for 16 years. We had, I'm an immigrant from California. We had a few communities like this in California. They're very successful. They're absolutely fantastic. So I want to congratulate you on that. And with that being said, I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
I moved it after giving reason.
Let him make the motion.
I'm not enthusiastic about this. You want to make your motion?
No, no, no.
Okay, all right. I moved it after giving reasonable consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing. The Washoe County Planning Commission approved special use permit case number WSUP 22-0001 and tentative subdivision map case number WTM 22-001 for Silverado Homes Nevada Incorporated, with the conditions included in, as Exhibit A to this matter, having made all five findings in accordance with Washoe County Code Section 110-810.30 and all 10 findings in accordance with the Washoe County Section 110-608.25.
I'll second.
Thank you. Gentlemen, is there any further discussion?
Chair Doncheck.
Vice Chair Spillcheck.
I just echo Commissioner Chesney about saying that this, this is a wonderful plan and I commend the planner for bringing this forward as well as the applicant. This is, it's nice to see something like this. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's, I just want to say that I, I know a lot of work went into this, especially since, as we said, this is the first time we are seeing something of this level. So kudos to Julie and to you because it is needed in this community because this area we are, as you say, we're living a little longer than we used to in the last century. So thank you very much and I really want to say thank you for that wonderful presentation. It really put a lot of points out there and I hope that it gets more out into the community to them to understand the terrific job that you are doing and that our, our staff are doing to try and help the community.
We look forward to you all coming out and visiting. Thank you.
Don't rush it, please. But I'm one of the first ones to say, hey, I, I got to watch my step.
I said, "Visit" first.
Thank you. So on that, I believe that we have a motion. And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Abstains? Thank you very much. Motion passes. And of course, Item D approved, so at this point, moving along to our agenda, we have Item 9A, Neighborhood Meeting Process. Our Secretary Trevor Lloyd turns into Planning Manager. Trevor Lloyd, please.
I'll click for you.
Okay, I'll just look at you. Thank you. Thank you. And thank you, Madam Chair. I gather you're going to stay there and not go to the dais? I can go to the dais. No, no, I was teasing. I was, no, you're fine. All right. I'll make this very brief. I know you all are probably anxious to, to go home, but as I'm sure you're all aware, the Cabs are no longer involved with the development review process and so we're transitioning to a new public engagement process. In order to, to make this functional process, we've created a new website that will provide the public with a list of upcoming development projects, as well as details of those, those projects, to include information on upcoming, uh, public meetings. The, the new website can be found on the Washoe County main webpage at www.washoecounty.gov and at CSD Planning and Development. So you would click on the left-hand side where it says Neighborhood Meetings, as shown up above, next slide. The site would act as a hub for community engagement with the stated intent of engaging community feedback for the development review process before applications are submitted to Washoe County. All right, the webpage is, it's very interactive. It includes a map. Can you go to the next slide, please? It does include a map of county projects that allows the public to click on each of these, these sites and, and then go to each one of the projects where the applicants have downloaded, or I should say uploaded, the project information, project details. They can, it also gives the community an opportunity to provide feedback on this, this web, on this website. So it really is a hub for gathering and disseminating information. What makes the process different overall is that, as opposed to how the process has worked in the past, and we are, this is the month that we're actually, we're going live, is that the neighborhood meetings take place prior to application submittal. And this is really key because now it gives the neighborhood or the community an opportunity to provide this information or concerns to an applicant that hopefully they'll actually build into the design of, of a project. And that's really the key or radical change that's, that's been made as, as, as part of, part of this overall process. So, next slide, please. So I just want to walk through the different steps for this new pre-application and pre-neighborhood meeting process. The first step is for the applicant to come in and have a pre-application or a pre-development meeting with staff. Typically, the pre-development meeting is much for the larger projects that involve more interaction with more agencies, Washoe County agencies or, or state and federal as well. We've been holding these pre-development meetings for the past several years. They've been very well received by the, by the development community as it provides for that, that roundtable discussion where we can air out all the, the potential concerns, red flags, that we can ask questions of the applicant, they can ask questions of staff. And again, with the bigger projects, it's, it's been very worthwhile. The other process is the pre-application meeting for maybe the, the smaller projects. That may be a one-on-one or, you know, it may involve only a few staff, planners, may involve some other, maybe someone from a different agency. But this is an opportunity for staff to ask questions of, of the applicant with the application in mind and to discuss the process and to work, work through the neighborhood meeting requirements, the noticing requirements, the meeting itself. And so that, that really is the, the intent and we do require the pre-application meeting before they can hold the, the neighborhood meeting and submit the application. Next slide. All right, the next step is the neighborhood meeting process itself. This is again, we, we will mirror the required, the noticing requirements of the public hearing. So if the public hearing requires noticing of 750 feet from the project site, that's what we require from the neighborhood meeting, we'll also vet the, the case description. And where we, we, we ask that the applicants hold the meeting in a location that's on-site or as close to the project as possible. We understand that's not always, there's not always a possibility for that to happen, but they must show us that they've tried every, or every avenue possible to hold it as close to the, the site as possible. And then finally is, next slide, is the, the application submittal. And we have, well, within the last couple of years, we changed that date to the 8th. It was the 15th of the month. But at least now we have, we, staff should be much more familiar with the applications rather than being, you know, blind in terms of what this application is on application day. And really, it's, it's, it's going to help with this whole process. We will be much more informed of the, the projects before they come in and so will the community. So we do expect that this is going to be a big benefit once, once we launch, once we've had an opportunity to address all of the glitches. And I'm sure there's going to be glitches. There always are whenever we start a new, new program like this. But we would invite all of you to go to the website to take a look at, you know, at all of the functions. Let us know if you have any issues or maybe ideas that you can make it, make it better. But we'll, again, may want to bring this back in a, in a few months and just to let you know how it's going. We'll find out. Absolutely, yeah.
Pat Phillips, I have a question. 750 feet, that would be one neighbor in our neighborhood that would be notified. Is there some way to enlarge that?
No need, that's already built in. And I do apologize, I should have said 750 feet or 30 of the closest neighbors. That's the requirement.
Which would be about half a block.
Sometimes we go out, the high desert, for example, we've had to go out miles to capture 30 of the immediate neighbors. 30 of the immediate neighbors, yeah.
That was my concern.
It's like Palomino Valley, 40-acre parcels. I mean, you got to do the 30 parcel operation.
Exactly.
Yes, I mean, we've had, with the Chocolate Drive, obviously, there was a neighborhood meeting. So I commend the planning staff for finding an alternative for input. And it's great to have these in our packet to see what the neighbors have said. And I just, I really appreciate and again, compliment planning on legitimately trying to engage the community prior to all of this stuff, you know, before it comes here. So thank you.
Thanks, I appreciate that.
I think we got a briefing on this at a CAD meeting earlier, but I think what is important, that if you go to the website and you see the map and they use the example, Donovan Pitt, which is up on 445 across from Pebble Creek, what happens with Donovan Pitt affects what happens in Palomino Valley. So our people, Palomino Valley people are very interested in what they're going to do with Donovan Pitt because we've got a lot of development going on in that area. So you don't necessarily have to live where the meeting is.
Right.
So if it affects you, you can still attend the meeting and give influence.
To everybody who's interested can attend the meeting.
Is there, so the community has to engage, there's not a notice of a neighborhood meeting? Are...
There is, again, the notice is the notice cards that are sent out. We also send out, you can ask to become, you can ask to enroll on all of the applications that are going to be heard and all the neighborhood meetings. So it's similar to the Cmail blast that the manager's office sends out, something very similar to that.
So when will we, I mean, can you point us in the direction to sign up for that?
Absolutely, you know what?
Go to the website and you can sign up.
You can sign up on the website. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Sorry.
That's very true, thank you.
But these recommendations, they still have to be within the law, correct, at these meetings? Or...
They're not under open meeting laws. They're not under open meeting law.
You can't have, you know, neighborhood people, you know, dictate what the conditions are going to be. But you can shape the project so you would minimize the...
It's just a community discussion. It's not an open meeting law because everybody can talk and whatever, and then the applicant or whoever's there is taking notes and stuff so they can put it together to prepare it for us for our packets, or as they go forward, take those concerns and things that are brought up and see what they can do within their plans before they put it out, if I'm correct.
That's correct. It's not, yes, these meetings are not subject to the open meeting law.
They're just an open forum.
Right. So it is, it is an open forum, exactly.
Yeah, I think, I attended one so far, and the developer was pretty excited about the input that they got because oftentimes, when it gets to this level or other levels, it's like hitting a brick wall, you know, all of a sudden, here comes public comment from 600 people. And, you know, the community's already had an opportunity. If the developer didn't listen, then shame on them.
Well, and as we all got, as part of our packets, because it was the addition, but it was the one on Chocolate Drive. And I thought, for a community meeting, I thought it was very well, took the questions, it gave a lot of the input. They didn't try to just give it a whitewash or a smooth over. They really, I thought it was fairly good.
I have a suggestion. I would love to see a media blitz to inform, oh, am I not on?
No, you're fine.
Okay. Is there some way that we can really inform the citizens, the community, the area about this change so that they'll be aware that they have a voice? Because anything that I've found out sitting here and being on cabs is, it is so important for citizens and homeowners to feel they're being heard.
It's an excellent idea, yeah. We try to get the word out, any way we can get the word out, you know, we, whenever we speak to people when they call up and ask about projects, we direct them to the website, right? And we discuss the process. And we've been doing that with the development community as well as the, you know, the concerned neighbors. Yeah. Just wanted to mention to a person that's been a huge part of this process, I'm going to embarrass her right now, is Lacey.
That's why she's been having those funny smiles over there when we were talking.
Yeah, incredibly, incredible how proactive Lacey has been. She realized, she saw the functionality of this GIS hub website and said she could step in and make it function. And I don't know how we would have done it without her. So thank you, Lacey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh.
Well, we can't do it because there's nobody else here, but yeah.
If I may, Secretary Lloyd and Chair Doncheck, I did just want to, because I've been so involved in this, I wanted to point out, Commissioner Phillips, as far as communication, when projects are posted to the hub site, an event email, or I guess what is compared to a Cmail blast, we've partnered very closely with the manager's office and the commissioner's support teams. So when an event is added to this website, everyone within the district that is on the mailing list gets a blast that says a new neighborhood meeting has been added. So we're partnering with communications, manager's office, commissioner's support. They're also getting the paper notice. And then the website is live and available to anyone to see. And if I can, maybe real quick, just so you can see, and there aren't a lot because we don't have a lot of upcoming meetings right now, but on this webpage, you have the project list, which you can click on. Any upcoming meeting has a link that will give you more details, but they're also going to show down here. So anyone that visits the website, all upcoming meetings are available right there. So there are multiple ways that they can engage with it.
Lacey, could I put out a possible request?
Sure.
We, as the planning commission, so that we can stay on top of everything, can we all, can we be at, hopefully I'm not overloading you guys, can we be added to those lists so no matter what district it goes out in, we all get the information so we can stay on top of what's going on?
I will look into that. I think you can do it right from the Washoe County website, but I'll double-check. And if it's easier, if I just email them and say, hey, add all these people to all your lists.
For me, that would be easier.
Okay.
It's okay.
If that's all right with Trevor, we can look into that.
Your emails may be inundated. Okay.
That's okay.
That's why I have like five different email addresses, so that's not a problem. Thank you. I think this is good, and the idea now is that all of us need to share it with all of our neighborhoods and whatever we're involved to, to let people know. So yeah. Thank you. So any more questions of Trevor on item 9A? If not, we're, Kate, do you have any questions or anything out there? Because we keep almost kind of forgetting you're there.
Because we don't see you.
Because we don't see you.
That's okay. I'm following everything and I'm good.
All right, thank you. Okay, we move on to item, any future agenda items that we'd like? Any 10B requests for information from staff? Okay, I don't want a request, but I know that we have previously requested to get a listing of planned but not yet built and things in various areas, and it would have been really nice with the Chocolate Drive and everything to know what was going on in the area, to give us a little more familiarity.
I know we had that map, I guess it was part of the...
I couldn't find it.
No, I do apologize. I know I saw it.
Couple meetings ago.
All right. I do apologize, yeah.
But we'd ask to have it in each packet when we have a, no, but we'd ask to have a new one put in each packet to refresh and whatever changes are. So because some of us lose paperwork, some of us forget, but if it's in our packets, it's fresh, especially when we've got the public mentioning it. It makes it easier for us to stay on top of.
I will continue spreading that word.
We appreciate that very much.
Very regular basis.
Any other requests from staff at this time? Okay. Then we will move on to item 11, Directors and Legal Counsel's item. Secretary Lloyd, anything on previous planning commission items?
Yes, the county commission approved the Highland Village MPA RZA at their March 22nd meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you. On legal information, Council Augustus, anything from your side?
Nothing, somebody said.
Thank you very much. Moving on is public comment. Is there any public comment in the chambers at this time?
No public comment in chambers.
And I have no hands raised via Zoom. I don't know if this is appropriate, but I did just want to state for the record, we did receive the one public comment for item AD, which was pulled from Mary Ann, Maryam, which was posted online and shared with commissioners. And I'll make sure that's included when the item comes before you again.
Thank you very much. Before we move to adjournment, I just want to say kudos to staff and everyone, although they all left to go home, but kudos because there was a lot in here. We had a lot of detail, a lot of important stuff, and thank you. Well done. We really appreciate it. Okay, moving on to item 13, motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn. Judging.
We're adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. It's only...